All right, we give our pledge of allegiance. Today we have Alejandro Zapata and Master Chief Mitchell Guerrero.
Left face, present arms.
Present to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, march, right face, forward, march.
Well, as usual, we appreciate our NJROTC convicts coming to be at for us. And if everybody's ready, we will call the May the 12th, 2022 Coffey County Board of Education Regent to meet together to order. Our invocation mat is Pastor PJ Holiday from Bredeburg Baptist Church. Is that correct? Thank you, sir.
Good Lord, we come before you this evening as a God, as the God who did us together in our mother's womb, the one who is the creator and sustainer of it all, by whose hand it was made and continues to exist. Lord, your word teaches us that we should cast all our cares on you because you care for us. And Lord, you tell us in that same word that you care so much that you have the hairs on our heads numbered. So, Lord, we come before you this evening because you care, to ask for wisdom for our school board, school administration, and school staffs. We especially pray for an extra measure of strength during this busy time of year. And, Lord, we say thank you for a county school system and leadership that continues to allow our students to express their religious freedoms. And, Lord, as I close this evening, I pray that these men and women would honor you in the decisions they make on our behalf. I pray for your protection over our children as they get out of school. I pray you give our teachers a restful summer. And, Lord, I pray for decisions made that affect next school year. Again, may they honor you. In the name that is above all names, I pray, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
First, we got a little something up here coming down the line. Appreciate you taking the time to come be with us. All right. Do they have a chance to look over at the agenda?
Move for the adoption of the gift.
Second, motion, second, all in favor?
All right, thank you. At this time, we will recognize our mission and vision as a school system. With graduation right around the corner, certainly relevant destination graduation for college career and life, and our vision of creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student. At this time, we're going to move forward with governance and leadership. We have special recognitions tonight. And our first recognition, we want to recognize Coffey High School and Mr. Van Allen and the rest of the staff at Coffey High School for being recognized by the Georgia Department of Public Education. They have recognized Coffey High School as a 2022 AP Honor School. And Coffey High School was recognized for the number of AP students that they have and the number of AP exams that have been passed by students at Coffey High School. And so Coffey High School was recognized as an AP Expansion School. That's AP schools with 25% growth in AP student participation from May of 2020 to May of 2021, and a minimum of 25 students testing in May of '20. And then also Coffey High School has been recognized as an AP STEM School. Schools with a minimum of five students testing at least four AP STEM courses, AP Calculus AB, AP Calculus BC, AP Statistics, AP Biology, AP Chemistry, AP Environmental Science, AP Physics, AP Physics II, AP Physics C, AP Computer Science, and AP Computer Science Principles. So, we're very proud of the work that's going on at Coffey High School. We do have some representatives here from Coffey High School tonight, and we want to thank y'all for everything that you're doing to help build up our academic programming at Coffey High School as well as throughout the whole system. And I think this is something we certainly can all be proud of for our high school and for all of our students who participate. And I know my daughter a couple of weeks ago was taking one of those AP exams, and I talked with Mr. Allen at the high school, and I want to say one day or over a course of about a week, y'all gave like 300 AP exams. Yeah, so the rigor is certainly there. Thank you. And our next recognition is for athletics. And we have Coach Steve White, our athletic director here, to recognize some of our sports.
It is my pleasure always to come and talk about the good things that are going on athletically at Coffey High School, Coffey Middle School. We're going to recognize tonight our individual and team region champions. We're going to start it off, we're going by season, so we're back to fall sports. We're going to start it off with our individual region champ, Devon Swanson in cross country. Now, the cross country coach, Blake Smith, couldn't be with us tonight, but Blake did a good job with this program. We had an individual champ there. And moving into the winter, winter sports, wrestling, Kate Hawke, please stand up, Kate. Our wrestling coach, we won the traditional wrestling region championship. Here's a picture of the team there. Next slide, we had eight individual champions, Kwanzi Baker, Jose Lugo, Mark Alexander, Miles Brown, Travis Adams, Jutavius Williams, Brandon Hy, and Dane Rich. Really good job with the wrestling. Coach Hawke does a good job with that group, and we really appreciate it.
Well, Jonathan, I want to tell you thank you for building up the wrestling program like you have. It's important, and I'd say our wrestling program right now under your leadership is the strongest it's ever been. And I think that's attributed to what you put into building the program here and making sure it's done right. And we just appreciate you and all the work that's gone into it. I know it's taken a lot of extra effort, but it shows, winning region championships. That's great. Thank you, Coach.
Okay, our swimming coach, Barbara Joyner. I'd like Barbara to stand up. First slide here is a boys' swimming region champion. I feel like there are three milestones that we've accomplished this athletic year. This is the first one I'm going to mention. For our boys, this is their 11th straight region championship. How impressive is that? That takes you back four regions, all the way back to Region 178. So, I would be willing to say that this is the strongest swim in Provo, South of Atlanta.
Oh, it is.
Without a doubt. Started with our boys with their 11th straight. Now, we go to the girls' 7th straight region championship. Absolutely, just phenomenal if you think about it. Been doing it a long time, does a really, really good job, and we appreciate you, Barbara, very much.
I want to say, Coach Joyner, thank you for what you've done above and beyond, just putting the team out there. It's obvious that you take a lot of pride in it. And I think really honestly, as far as all of our other programs, we probably ought to look at what you've done with swimming, what y'all have done with swimming, from the little ones on up, and try to replicate that in just about everything that we do. Because obviously, y'all are doing it right. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into our spring sports, our tennis program. And both of our tennis coaches are good to be here tonight. Holly Bagwell is our girls' coach, Blake Smith is our boys' coach. There's a great picture of our boys' and girls' teams. The boys' region champions for the sixth consecutive year, girls' region champions for the sixth consecutive year also. Also for our girls, milestone number two of the year, our girls hosted the semifinal match in the state playoffs. That is the first Coffey team to host a semifinal game or match since 1983. So, that's another milestone number two for this athletic year. A good job, really proud of our tennis program. Track and field, individual region champions, Kate Barrett in three different events, the 800 meter, the 1600 meter, and the 3200 meter runs. Chris Stafford, two region championships in the long and triple jump. And Chris went on the next week to sectionals, and he was the triple jump winner at the sectionals also. And then Devon Swanson again, the cross country region champion, was also the 3200 meter run champion. That's the old two miles from my days. All of these kids are in, they're plumbers right now competing in the state track meet. So, we're well represented there, and we're very proud of them. And that's Coach Greg Luke, by the way, and he's, of course, he's at work. All right, we also want to recognize our newest program, our bass fishing team. Kyle Byrd is, stand up. Kyle is not only the coach, the inaugural coach of our first bass fishing team ever, he is also the boat captain of our state qualifying team. Now, real quick, bass fishing, you have to have, you're going to have to enter as many six boats per sectional. There are four sectionals, you have to qualify to go to state. But long story short, we, in the fourth sectional at Lakeland here, our boat captain by Kyle, our anglers were Dakota Atkinson and JP Harper, and they finished third out of 215 boats. And here's their catch from Lake Lanier. Many times I talk about teams playing for a state championship, but Saturday up at Clarksville Reservoir, they will be fishing for a state championship. We wish them the best. Very proud of our bass fishing team, really appreciate your support in getting that program started. Kyle did a great job this year, a lot of interest, male and female, and I feel like that we're only going to grow there. Okay, that's our region champions, but I don't want to stop there. I want to get to milestone number three. This was our girls' soccer program. Our girls' soccer team hosted and won the first state playoff game in the program history. So, that was a milestone there for that group. That's the third that I thought was really special for this athletic year. But also, we'd like to listen, to mention to you, total athletic program wise, we had 16 teams that are eligible to qualify for the state playoffs. We qualified 14 of the 16 to compete for a state championship. I think that's really, really good. Want to close with this. Really feel like a diverse year, success across the board, male and female, really like where our programs are. So, I started kind of looking back and thinking the things we're doing. And one of the things we've really have put a lot of work into is the building of our weight program. And I'm not a person that believes that you have to play the same sport year-round to reach your potential, but you do have to be committed to conditioning, strength, flexibility, and speed development year-round if you want to reach your potential. Right now, thanks to you, we are offering all of our male and female athletes from grades six through 12 the opportunity to lift weights during school day. And I would be willing to bet we're the only school system in the state of Georgia that is doing that. And it's showing right here that it's working, and I think it's going to continually make us better. And we really appreciate that your support of that program, because we couldn't do it without you, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank y'all, Coach. Great presentation. And I think when we talk about an equitable and excellent education, that it all goes together, and that's part of that excellence piece. So, thank you. All right, next presentation, Mr. Clayton.
Thank you, Dr. Leece. Well, tonight, I'm happy to recognize our nurses in our school system. This is National School Nurse Week, and we certainly could not function without the nurses, certainly during COVID, but even now, they are the superstars on the campus, taking care of our students. And it is obvious that they are very well loved by students and staff. So, I'd like to take a moment and just introduce them to you. Starting on the top left, we have Rosemary Fullwood, who's at the Career Academy, Karen Hurd at West Green, Jody Altman at Westside, Cheryl Davis at Coffey Middle, and Catherine Ellis is our school countywide nurse. And she goes around and assists all of our nurses with their paperwork. You know, our nurses bill for Medicaid, and that helps us tremendously in the budget. And so, she goes around to make sure they know how to do it properly. In our second row, left to right, we have Jeanette Duncan. She is a nurse paraprof that works one-on-one with one of our students. Vivi Gardner from Eastside, Mariana Guerrero, she is a subnurse, but she works quite a bit helping us out. Heather Day from Ambrose, and Shakina Alford. Shakina is a nurse from Coffey Regional Medical Center. And we have another nurse regional. They come and help us. We have a wonderful partnership, actually a contract with Coffey Regional, that if we need a substitute, they send a nurse over to help us. So, we wanted to salute her as well. And then Cheryl Jeffries from Coffey Middle. The fourth row, left to right, we have Michelle Jones. She is actually our telemedicine coordinator, turning in all of the paperwork and helping the nurses. Then we have Jennifer Davis, who is our nurse supervisor from Coffey Regional, Henrietta Merritt from Indian Creek, Michelle Grantham Coffey High, Eden Smith at Brockston. And then last but not least, on the bottom, we have Hope Long from Satilla and Jessica Bass from the freshman campus. We certainly would like to say thank you to Coffey Regional Medical Center, because, as I said, they are a partner to us with the health clinic we have on the Coffey Middle School campus that is totally funded by Coffey Regional Medical Center. And our students and staff can take advantage of that clinic. And we want to say thank you to Jennifer. She has been a godsend to us as our nurse supervisor. She's so knowledgeable, and she's constantly training and helping the nurses, and she's very pleasant to work with. And we want to thank them too. A couple of weeks ago, the hospital provided over 700 physicals for our athletes for free. And that number keeps growing every year, but that is a big plus to help all of our athletes. So, thank you, school nurses. We love you and keep on doing a great job. You're doing very exciting.
Ms. Clayton, I think you have out the third row, if you'd like to announce them as well.
Thank you, ladies. Third row, we have Trellis Iglesias. She is also a Coffey regional nurse. Michelle Taylor, she is a nurse paraprof that works individually with a student. Lisa Anderson from Nichols Elementary, Jennifer Behr, who is also a subnurse, and Cheryl Jeffries from Coffey Middle. I apologize, ladies, but we appreciate you as well. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. And now we have our last recognition, which is our Teachers of the Year, and Dr. Tucker will present our Teachers of the Year.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. The Teacher of the Year program spotlights the teaching profession and recognizes the outstanding teachers in our system. The Teacher of the Year is a certified teacher in grades pre-K through 12 and is awarded to these teachers by their peers. They're nominated and they're voted on by their peers. So, it is an outstanding award for each of these individuals. And one winner from the group that I'm about to introduce to you will be selected as the Coffey County Teacher of the Year, and the winner will be announced in the fall and will then apply for the Georgia Teacher of the Year. Without further ado, Coffey County 22, 23 Teachers of the Year from Ambrose Elementary, Patricia Gomez. From Brockston, Mary Hayes, Sonya Daniels. From Eastside Elementary, Tonja Simpson. From Indian Creek Elementary, Jamie Nepper. From Nichols Elementary, Casey Reed. Satilla Elementary, Amy Hunt Heller. Representing West Green Elementary is Jamie Taylor. From Westside Elementary, Michelle Lott. From Coffey Middle School, Mr. Jordan Farbo. From George Washington Carver Freshman Campus, Shawana Hawke. From Coffey High School, Mr. Charles Trent Strickling. From Ryegrass Regional College and Career Academy, Queen Maciver. Again, we would like to congratulate each of these individuals for this accomplishment and being recognized as the 22, 23 Coffey County Teachers of the Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker, and congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Year. And we'll find out, I guess, when we come back in August, who the Teacher of the Year is with the system. So, that's exciting. Congratulations. All right. The next item on the agenda is the resource capacity in our consent agenda. In our consent agenda, we have the minutes from last month's meeting. The board reviewed those minutes in the work session, and they are approved for, to be approved on the consent agenda. We have the monthly financial report that was presented to the board in the work session. And we have the school nutrition bids, and this is renewal of the current agreements that we have with those vendors, and those will continue for FY '23 with approval of this. We have surplus property, and this is the projectors and boards that will be removed from Coffey Middle School that will be surplus on the GOV deals that it's not disposed of and recycled will be placed on GOV deals. And then we have the Okie Pinocchio Reesha Contract Agreement to Continue Services with Okie Pinocchio Reesha for next year. If there's no questions or comments, I would ask the board to approve the agenda as presented. And I have no need for an executive session. And I will present the personnel list to be approved by the board, and I would like to present the list as presented and ask that we rescind the action that was taken in February with respect to number 18. So, that will be part of the recommendation.
Motion for Personnel is stated by Dr. Leece. Motion, second, all in favor?
All right. And the next item on the agenda is the public comments, and we do have one person who contacted us yesterday for public participation. That is Ms. Tammy Bennett from Douglas, Georgia. And Ms. Tammy Bennett wanted to make some comments for the board. And I will remind you, you have five minutes and not to...
I'll be very grateful, because I can assure you, this is way out of my comfort zone.
Yes, ma'am.
But as I was preparing for the end of the year, I realized that because this is out of an educator's comfort zone, that many times, the positives about our school system and the thank yous to you guys are not said. So, I've read this, I'm just going to read it. A lot of times I write Dr. Leece or Kim a letter at the end of the year, just thanking them for the things they've done, but I really wanted to read it to all of you this year. Dr. Leece and board members, thank you for allowing me to speak. This is a little out of my comfort zone, like I said, but it's really been on my heart. As most of you know, I am Tammy Bennett, and I retired last year after 30 years of teaching in this wonderful system. This year, I had the privilege of working part-time at Westside Elementary. I don't want to take too much of your time, but I really do want to share about our school system. I want to start by saying a special congratulations to Ms. Kim Clayton and Dr. James Banks. I consider both of you to be friends and one of my wonderful parents, and both have also helped shape my youngest into the educator she is today. You both have served well, led with grace, and now it's your time to enjoy the next chapter. As a mother, three of my children went through the school system and have gone on to achieve amazing things. They received top-notch instruction as well as being prepared for real life. They each speak fondly of memories they had from various grades and teachers. As a teacher, I've been blessed to work for four incredible principals. Each school and staff brought with it its own unique strengths and identities. I wake up each day excited to go to work. It's not a job, it is my calling. In fact, teaching has, is stressful, and has become more stressful, but... But when I know that we're in it for the good of the kids, it makes it that much more rewarding. I feel that many times when we as a community express our appreciation, that you as a board, that our superintendent and our leaders at the county office are overlooked. You make tough decisions daily, and of course, not everyone's going to agree with those. Dr. Leece, I admire you both as a parent who taught this baby girl and as a leader of the system. It is easy to look at what has been accomplished since your tenure here and see how far we have come. You, along with our current board members, work together to make sure that our mission and vision are always kept forefront. Even though we've been through some very tough times lately, together you have helped me sure that Coffey County school system remains the best in the state. Oprah Winfrey said, and always she said, "Education is the key to unlock in a world, a passport to freedom." We can think of ourselves as being in the travel business here in Coffey County. We don't just hand out passports. We make sure that their bags are packed full of everything they need to be successful in their journey of life. Thank you all for allowing me to be a small part of that journey. What an honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Tammy, sweetie. And you were great, but my daughter, I'd say that.
My boy. We appreciate it.
That concludes public comments. At this time, we will adjourn the meeting, and if any board members have any comments.
I'll just say, you know, we're winding up another year and having another challenge to graduate, and I appreciate all the effort that goes into, you know, getting each child there, including mine, from the teachers to administration to, you know, bus drivers, nurses, I mean, the whole group does a very good job in Coffey County. I'm proud of everybody in our system. You know, I just thank you for the job you did.
More movement, gentlemen.
We'll just appreciate the kind words, Ms. David.
They were not used to that.
Thank you, Tammy. I do have some kind of public service announcements. On Tuesday, June 14th, beginning at 9:00 a.m., we will be having our official dedication and ribbon cutting for the Clayton W. Mathis Performing Arts Center and the John M. Maylie Auditorium located on the campus of Coffey High School. So, that's Tuesday, June 14th at 9:00 a.m. So, if y'all want to put that in your calendars and public out there, if anybody's watching, it'll be Tuesday, June 14th at 9:00 a.m., the dedication of the Performing Arts Center. We especially would like to invite our community members to attend and see this new beautiful facility. Without the support of our Coffey County community and improving the recent SPLAS campaign, this beautiful facility would not have been possible. Tuesday, June 14th, 9:00 a.m., we hope to see you there. And Coach, I would include on that piece, when you mentioned the athletics and the success and the different programs and the weights and all that that we're able to offer, I do want to thank our community for supporting the performing arts and the Performing Arts Center that we have, beautiful new facility that we're able to house our arts in, and then our ag facility that we... then our ag facility that we have. Another county's coming next week, Pierce County, their board members are going to come over and look at our ag facility. We had several systems come last year to look at our ag facility, but we have one of the nicest ag facilities in this part of the state. And then our athletic facilities, y'all have done a great job maintaining them and building them up, and so we are blessed in Coffey County to have the East SLOSS and to be able to have nice things for our boys and girls. So, thank you, board, for your commitment to making that happen, and to all of our voters and community members who make that happen. So, it's truly a blessing. We will have graduation on Saturday, May 28th, that's coming up, so we will be graduating at Jar Down Stadium, so everybody get ready. Thank you.